...a meeting to order of the town council for a joint public hearing with our colleagues from the planning commission tonight. I, with the concurrence of my fellow council members, what I'd like to do is dispense with our usual round of reports up front, deal with the joint hearing portion of the meeting, and then we'll come back and pick it up with our normal agenda after that. Is that work with paper and pen?
Sure.
And we have our lawyers, Mr. Krim is with us online, so I will, if anybody has questions for him, I will repeat those questions just in case you can't hear them and act as his parrot puppet on the other side. So, the town council's meeting is open, and I have a script I need to go through here to bring for both Carol and I to bring both into session. So, we are holding a public hearing tonight for a special use permit request for increased signs square footage. We'll take public comments during the hearing. Planning Commission will jointly hold its public hearing with us. I'll briefly explain the rules for these public hearings and then invite the Planning Commission Chair to call the Planning Commission to order. The purpose of a public hearing is to hear from interested members of the community about the advisability of issuing this special use permit. Speakers must direct their comments to the council and the planning commission, not the audience. That's it for Madam Chairwoman. I invite you to call Planning Commission to order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I call the Planning Commission to order, and I'm pleased to say that a quorum is present, so I now open the Planning Commission's public hearing on the proposed special use permit described by the mayor.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, I now open the town council's public hearing on the same matter. We will first hear a presentation by Steve Guyerson, Town Zoning Administrator, after which I will invite members of the public to present their comments. Mr. Guyerson, over you.
Thank you. Let me get to the correct page here. Again, this is a public hearing for a special use permit, to increase the sign square footage for Rush River Commons. We all know where Rush River Commons is located. It's currently a zone, village mixed use, village residential, is in a historic district, and is part of a plan due to the unit development that's been approved a few years ago and is currently under construction. The proposed use is a sign package for the food pantry and primarily the office building portion of the property and some directional signs located in the parking lot. The total square footage requested is more than the zoning ordinance currently allows. So, this is the purpose for this hearing. The ordinance allows for a special use permit, which is approved by the town council to be able to promote that, not permit and square footage. After reviewing of the comprehensive plan, I found no specific comments in the comprehensive plan policies that address signage. I've gone through the zoning ordinance, and essentially, within the district where the office and the food pantry is located, maximum of 15 square feet is permitted, and have interpreted that to mean per building. So, currently, the application is for some project identification sign, which is a little over nine square feet, an office building sign, which is a little over 14 square feet, and of course, the food pantry sign. And that total square footage of signs and directional signs is for 52.33 square feet. And the applicant has provided a detailed layout of where the signs would be on the site plan, and the size of each sign. All the signs are going to be located on the property, and the signs are subject to architectural review board following approval of the additional square footage. Rather than going on about this, the application is for 37.33, you've gotten very accurate with it, square feet above the allowed square footage allowed by the right. I'll stop there. Be happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant has prepared a larger drawing that would like to share that.
I guess I have two clarifications. First clarification, which I understand in talking with our counsel, our legal counsel, is that when we're looking at the square footage, we're looking at it cumulatively, not for each individual sign. So, I just want to make sure that that's...
That's correct.
That's what we're working in. And then I thought I heard you say that you were interpreting it as 15 square feet per building?
That's correct.
And you were talking about two different buildings. You were talking about the retail building and then about the food pantry.
Right.
So, the cumulative amount that you had, the 53 square feet or whatever it was, it sounded like one of them was less than 15 square feet, maybe the food pantry one, and the other one was more?
There's some project identi... There's a project identification sign that's, I'll say, at the entrance to the project so that you're maybe going into Rush River. And then there are also some directional signs. So, these are signs that are located in the parking lot that are not distributed in a specific area.
That's... Thank you. That's helpful.
All right. I now open the hearing for public comments.
Typically, the presentation is made by the one asking for the exception, and then there's the public here. Are you reversing that on purpose?
I'm not, but I'm also not required to do that. But you beat me to the punch with SDC that you would like to speak, but I have to move to the public hearing.
I'm happy to speak if, you know, for some reason. I think Steve Plesko for the applicant's Rush River Commons. Steve gave a great summary of the case. You know, Rush River, we've got a bunch of buildings. We've got two commercial buildings and then five residential buildings. The ordinance and the zoning is silent on the signage for residential, but as part of the SGP, we're happy to have that reviewed by the ARB for that. But we're designing the project as a campus. We want to have the signage coordinated, have a theme for the signage. We got Fathom creative to do our signage design, conceptual design. They did our project logo, which we're very pleased with, so we asked them also to do the signage program. And as we laid out the signage and designed the signage, we were very cognizant of the ARB requirements and just in general that there's not much signage in the town of Washington where it's very understated, minimal signage, and but high-quality signage. So, we have a project identification sign that we want to put out near the corner of Warren and Leggett, and in the packet, there's a conceptual design of it. We took inspiration for that from the sign that the inn has for the ballroom, where it's a wooden post, there's a wrought iron frame around it, and then there's a hanging sign. So, we want, we would like to do something similar to that right at the corner, so when people are coming in, it's like, okay, this is where Rush River Commons is. And then on the office building, we're not proposing any signage to be facing the side of the office that faces Warren Avenue. If you recall, we've got one, the long axis of the office building faces Warren. We would just put signage on the south side of the building, which is where the main entrance is to the building, and then on the corner of the building, on the west end of the building, which faces the post office side. On the first floor, we've got a space that's planned, hopefully, for a food service or some kind of retail service there, and we want to put some signs on the doors there so if we do get a user, they can have signs like that. And again, we looked at the signage in town, and one of the signs we're asking for is over at the bakery at Patios. We liked how they painted the sign on the window and want to have the ability to do something similar to that once we figure out who the tenant is. There's a building number sign that'll be on the office building, but really, there's only four signs and a building sign on the office building. For the food pantry, all we're proposing is a number for the building, and then right at the door on the, again, on the west side that faces the post office side, by the main door, it's just a little sign that's basically this big, that just has rappahannet, you know, food pantry, the hours of operation, the contact numbers. And then as you go further into the project and the parking lots, the residential buildings, each building has to have a number, and then each unit has a number. So, there's a little more signage for residential, but the other thing that we wanted to do is at each end of the parking lots that feed in to the residential part of the project, we've got that central spine sidewalk, so people will enter the units off the central sidewalk. But we wanted to have like a little, like a mini directory sign on each end where it's a graphic of where the units are, where the buildings are, and where the units' numbers are, just so people can, you know, navigate and find that without having to go run around. And it's, the signage for the residential is a little more complicated. We have the three duplex units that are pretty straightforward. We can sign those easily off of the main spine, but for the buildings, we call the villa buildings, that are the two stories where the ground floors are for one-bedroom units, and then you have upstairs that are two-bedroom units. To get to the upstairs units, you have to go on a stair on the side. It's a contained stair. So, the signage for that is, it's not as apparent if you're walking down the sidewalk to know, oh, if I want to go see my friend, you know, in building 37, unit C, I've got to go around this corner and up the stairs. So, again, we were trying to do that, and then the design of those signs are a little, kind of a miniature version of our project ID sign. Again, we'd post wrought iron frame hanging with, you know, kind of a little directory sign. So, that's what we're proposing. And again, we'll go through the ARB process, make sure they check off on the design, but we're trying to do the minimum amount of signage, but we've got a lot of buildings and more than the average bear, I guess, so.
Can I ask a clarification? Oh, does that come later, Jim? You can ask if you have questions for the...
Yeah.
If you have questions for the president.
Thank you. Yeah, one question.
Sure.
Steve, you pointed out that the town of Washington doesn't have many large signs. We just don't have them, and they're very discreet where we have them usually. Just so that I understand, you held up that sign, instead it would be the size of that for the food pantry. Is that the maximum size of any sign you will have?
No, they vary, and in the little booklet that came with this, we have the dimensions for each sign that we would use.
Okay. And can you just let, tell me which is, what is the biggest dimension of a single sign?
The biggest one would be the ID sign.
It's about 12 feet.
The main, the project identification sign would be at legged. So, this one is if it has the dimensions.
Okay.
So, I literally measured the one for the ballroom, and you have a five-foot-tall wood post, and then there's like a two-foot wrought iron section, and then there's a framework. And what we're proposing for the dimensions, that framework is like 35 by 37 and a half. And when you do the area for the sign, you have to measure to the exterior dimensions of your framework that is in that area. So, that's...
Thank you. But do we have a discussion?
Yes. Once the public, once the public hearing closes, we will have an internal discussion.
Well, the application has three lines. Project identification, office building, and food pantry. And I'm not opposing the signs that you described it, but you just described a lot of signs. And I would love to see an actual building-by-building list. I don't see that in there because like...
It's in the table, and I've got, with your permission, I've got...
It's back, I'm looking at this card.
I've got layouts that I can show you on a bigger scale. This is in the...
No, no, I'm saying, this shows me three signs. Okay? So, but does that 52 square feet include the two residential directory signs?
Yes.
But no, I don't think...
The total square footage includes that.
You've got a 43...
It doesn't add up then.
...by 35-inch sign, and you're going to have two of those.
It only shows the project identification, the office building, and the food pantry, not the residential portion.
That's in the table. It's with the...
Excuse me, there's two directories that are on the parking lot.
I understand that.
They're included in that square footage.
But I don't see a...
It's not aligned on...
There should be a line by line, building by building.
It should be in your package.
It's not aligned on the... That's what you said.
That just, that gives you every single sign in the...
Presenting phase one to me.
Okay.
As I understand, you're just presenting phase one to me.
Correct.
For the retail building and for the...
Oh, okay. All right. That wasn't clear because that's...
So, you got too big.
It went larger description, but yeah.
Yeah, just for the two buildings.
And then when you have like a double-sided sign, you only count one side of it for the area that's...
That's fine. That's fine. Like I said, I was just, the one that shows the residential building map wasn't here, and I thought that we were approving all signage, which we're not. We're approving the pantry and the office building.
Right.
And then just the general, you are here.
Yeah. But in truth, when we go to the ARB, we'll show them the residential signage too.
No, I understand that because you're talking about, you know, on each building and then each unit's going to have a sign. So, there'll be another list that you'll come to us and say, these are the residential units and surrounding will be this list of signs for this many square feet.
And we have to talk to the fire marshal too to make sure he's happy with the building number sign placement. Everything's addressed for the project off Leggett.
Right.
So, for sure, we knew that we had the signs for the office and food pantry have a number that faced Leggett. Residential, we still have to work it out with them because you've got the central sidewalk. You've got three buildings that face Leggett, and then we've got two that are, you know, a lot older.
Right. No, I get it. I just, like I said, that's what I was confused about, but I'm good now.
Okay.
So, I had a couple of questions if I could.
Then ask Jean.
I have a question actually about the project identification sign.
I'm sorry.
The project identification sign. This is apparently to scale, right? So, these little human figures are, so the sign suffered being a bit above the height of any person. How does this sign compare to the sign that would be more or less across from about identifying the town of Washington?
Much taller.
Much taller.
Roughly the same size, I think.
Because it seemed to me it was much taller.
It's a taller post. The sign may not be, I think it's a little bigger.
Yeah, maybe. Which sign is it?
That's Welcome to Washington sign. It's across the street.
Ah.
This is tall, this looks to be tall.
It might be.
Because I've stood next to the other one. I'm a major...
If you measured it off the one that's here in town for the ballroom, that's way above the middle.
We're talking, we're talking about this one.
So, as I count this up, I'm seeing that this is roughly 61 and a half inches high. Is that correct?
Because it's way about 70 inches.
The project identification sign?
The one that shows, I'm a little confused because you have part of the, so I don't know, I can't...
They're both asking about the same thing.
Yeah, I'm trying to like...
So, 60 inches wood post.
Oh, I see.
Two foot, and then this, this is all wrought iron.
Gotcha.
A stone that sticks in the...
And that people are not...
I didn't realize that you're using this sign for the 60 inches.
It's been...
Okay.
We've literally copied the mentions of all of them. She saw me out there measuring, so I can...
So, the... Mr. Mayor, I have one question. So, first question, I had a lot of businesses which have lovely signage will list the people who are renting space in retail business. You're not planning to do that.
No, we're going to have it once for the office building where we're the most tenants, we're going to put a directory sign inside.
Inside. The second is, just in, I would pass this on to my colleagues on the ARB, but there is a perception that Rush Rivers is, I understand that you have a logo, it's a beautiful logo. I understand you have a sense of who you are, but it's part of the town of Washington. And having a kind of its own identity separate, I wonder if there's a way that you can meld the two so that people would have some sense that it is in the town of Washington, such as...
So, the public can get one. All right. So, if there are no immediate questions, we can go back and ask the applicant later after the, but I would like to ask the members of the public if they have anyone who would like to speak.
Thank you.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
It's technically the applicant, so.
Right, he's also...
Right, I realized that.
He's one of our most noted residents. A couple things. One, as far as I'm aware, this is the very first application for an exception of the sign ordinance since there's been a sign in town. Second, has it been noted accurately? If you do a survey of the signage, they are not just discreet. They are tasteful, and they relate exactly to each other. I know that they were not all manufactured by the same people. I know that there was not much conspiracy, and when they were designed, it was put up at different times. But if you just run down Main Street, you're struck by the fact of how they relate one to the other as they go down the street. There is no signage that says the name of Washington. I guess if you're a three-star vision, you don't need a sign. At the very end of our town, there is a very, very discreet sign that says, I think, Mount Prospect, despite the fact that that's our most prestigious private home in the town. Our inns are very discreet. They're commercial properties, very discreet signs. Our churches, very discreet signs. So, from whichever entrance you come into town, whether it's Warren or whether it's North Main Street or whether it's South Main Street, you have very tasteful town of Washington now at a uniform. Thank you. The one at the end of where I live is an improvement. You immediately see the Washington School if you come that way. I'm not really opposing this. I don't understand it particularly. I especially don't understand the food pantry numbers. 28 square foot signage is a lot of signage. It's the one that's most out of line with our ordinance, but I haven't seen it drawn up. What is portrayed in the rendering or the drawing of the front of the food pantry couldn't possibly be 28.9 square feet. So, I'm confused about that number. I would support the zoning administrator's decision to treat each building as within its own 15 square foot. I think that's fair. I think also, there may be some precedent for that in the town. For example, at the school, there is the one on the street, but then there's the other ones you enter the building, and I don't know, I didn't get out my ruler to date measure. I think together they come close to 15, but they could be 20. But I think that visually is what we're talking about, and if they're separated by some space, they're not a billboard, they're not going to be destructive to anybody's sense of the town. As far as with the comprehensive plan, as a reference to that, I have packed and moved my copy of the original agreement out of the PUD. It was many pages I'm looking at Carol on because I think she sat right there through most of them. And Mr. Ackley was at almost every one of them. I remember quite clearly a comment as when we were discussing its compatibility with its neighbors. Mr. Ackley astutely said, now which neighbor would that be? The Darlington Buildings on the left or Kreiser's Construction Lot on the right? I thought it was a fair point. I have more concerns about the Rush River logo that you have in your town. I think the other ones are discreet and probably okay. They are not quite as historical-looking, but that's okay. It's a new project. But I do have concerns because sort of the governing principle going into this was, it was a first time ever for the town. It was being built under, developed under a completely new kind of zoning, a PUD. A PUD erases everything existing and writes its own law for whoever's going to do the development between the developer and the town. I think we've gotten it nearly right, but there were some, obviously, some things overlooked the next time the town does this, they'll probably be more careful about some things. But the guiding principle was it must be compatible with the history and character of the town. In other words, it must be part of the town, not a separate subdivision, not a separate division, not anything that was separate and apart from the existing town. Now, at the time, the post office wasn't there. The creation of the post office in some ways enhances this project because it now makes it sort of now more community center like the old square was. So, that's a good thing. But I would be opposed, and I'm leaving, but should I return and drive in, I would rather not see something that looks like every subdivision sign I've ever seen that's at the front entrance to the subdivision. I'd rather, as was noted, I'd like to come in and see town of Washington, the fire hall, and then I think everyone knows Rush River. Now, once you turn that corner, sure, identify the buildings, the food pantry is just the crowd. My single larger, because if, if it's really close to 15 for the food pantry, I don't really have an objection, except I raise questions about, A, granting exceptions to someone that's never been accepted before. It's a precedent, but maybe it's warranted. Two, I'm not crazy about the idea of someone that says we're separate. Maybe that's not the intent, but that's the way it's going to be right about another people. If someone could explain how we got to 28.99 with Steve's square, it's got to be a lot of those squares to get that number.
Well, if you look at the, if you go back to this table.
Yes.
Okay, you'll see that the main entrance, building number is a foot. The main entrance doorway sign is 60, and there's a north directory and a south directory. Each one of those is about 11 feet. So, that collectively is 28 square feet.
Okay.
So, the food pantry side is only six, six feet.
It's a non-problem against that number, not the size of that area.
Not the individual side. Yeah. We don't have a depiction of that directory, do we? Where is that one?
It's the last graphic in the, the last graphic in the packet.
Oh, so it's going to look like the residential one.
That's, yeah, this is the residential directory. It's kind of a mini version of the project identification sign.
Okay. So, do you have a north? So, that's going to be the north, is that right?
Right. We definitely have some questions that I got, it's done for the public part.
Okay.
Any other, any other comments from the public? Nancy?
I have a way, been at the food pantry experience, and even in this weather, there are people who sit outside, there are people who sit inside as, like an old comfy store around the stove. It's, it's a very warm and comfortable place, and people are in and out. I would, well, I think the design of Rush River is quite lovely. I wouldn't want signage or other things that, that give it too urban a feel because the clientele, I mean, summer, children are out in the parking lot playing, and you, you want to continue that. You don't want them feel, to feel like they're going into an alien place, a place that's too far above them. You know, the current food pantry is very, is rather...
Humble.
Humble.
Okay. Any other comments from the public?
So, on behalf of closing the public, so I would move, I would move a motion to close the public hearing.
For the planning commission?
For the planning. I said. All in favor? Aye.
Okay. A motion is now ordered to the council to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please, empty by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are out of the public hearing.
So, first of all, I would like to say, and I'm not quite sure why this was the case, Steve... Steve, you said to me, oh, well, it's all in the packet. Members of the planning commission saw the packet for the first time around midday today. And so many of us haven't had a chance. We've not had a single meeting on it. None of us had seen this big packet with the drawings. So we're really at a bit of a loss not having discussed it. From my own part, and then I will pass to my colleagues. I wanted to say something along the lines of what Gary had said. I believe when we devised this program together, we went to a huge amount of trouble and because we believed it, that we were designing something that would be in the spirit of the town. It would be Little Washington through and through. And so given how much time you've spent on your buildings, my feeling is the signs should really reflect the norm of what is in Little Washington. And I agree with Nancy, not too urban feel. Where I have my biggest issue is on the signage around Rush River Commons. And I have that because I think we're all about inclusion. We worried a lot that what we were doing at Rush River Commons would be a kind of appendage to the town. We didn't want it as subdivision or a add-on, and the community would feel separate. And the whole spirit was this is Little Washington. I live, as Jeanne does, in the north part of Little Washington. I guess we could have a sign saying North Little Washington. Mount Salem, they have Mount Salem, Little Washington. But the fact is, we're all Little Washington. And I asked myself, if I asked the question, well, where is the food pantry going to be? Is the answer Little Washington or Rush River Commons? Are we slicing and dicing? What we want to make sure is all about Little Washington. So I am very uncomfortable with all the signage around Rush River Commons. I don't mind a little sign, a little tagline on the bottom of a sign, the in has in at Little Washington. But to have a big sign like a subdivision, I agree with Gary, really worries me because I think right from the get-go, we're saying this is separate. And that is not in the spirit of what, of how we started off. So I would, from my perspective, and I don't know what my fellow commissioners, I would like more time to study this since we only saw it today. But those are the issues that trouble me. The separateness that you're setting up, which I think is not in the spirit of how we began. And then the fact that these seem to be out of style with everything else we have in the town. Not the hanging bed, but all the other signage. It just seems too much, too much signage. So let me pass to any of my colleagues if they want to make a comment.
I would agree. First and foremost, just on the time factor, I haven't had a chance to do it justice, to look at all the time that you guys put into it, putting it together. So I can't really comment with any super-duper clarity. I do agree with the comments from the public and Caroline's reiteration that it seems a little bit, there's us and then there's Little Washington feeling. I don't think that was your intent, obviously, but I think it maybe comes off because it's not like a huge, I mean, it's big, but it's not really a big development. I don't know if we need the signage. And I think to Caroline's point, the food pantry is in Little Washington. It's not in Rush River. So I would echo the need for, could we please take some more time and look at it as a council, a commission, excuse me. Sorry.
Any other commissioners?
Any other commissioners? I can't really speak right now, but yes, I need more time to look at this as well. And hearing these comments, they're pretty instructive on how we feel that what is happening down there, the project itself, is a part of Little Washington. And so perhaps this idea of, you know, large signage indicating a separate place might not be in keeping with, in terms of the spirit of what you guys actually intended.
Well, if, Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to your comments from the planning commission. Apologies on you not getting, but there's a lot of information here. And we've been working on this for quite a while with staff. So it's not something we've thrown together. It's not something we rushed. I mean, we've been working on this since the fall of last year. We originally submitted the application in January. So we've been working closely with staff and we actually even presented, did a preliminary non-viable presentation to the ARB also just to get their initial unofficial reaction to it. But no intent to separate the project from the community. In fact, we're inspired by existing signage in the community, thus the design of the project ID sign and the residential directory signs, trying to emulate what we saw in town, which we presumed is acceptable and in character. As far as the use of our logo, one of the things I would point out is as you come into town, we have no signage on our office building that faces Warren Avenue. So for someone who's coming into town, coming to our office building where the second floor is going to be social services, and then you can't even see the food pantry from Warren Avenue if you're coming down Warren Avenue. You have to turn left and go down Leggett Lane, and then you'll see the food pantry. So for patrons who may not have ever come to the food pantry for a time, where's the food pantry? They know it's at Rush River Commons. So instead of having a sign that says, you know, office building with county social services and our other tenants in the food pantry, our thought was a simple sign with our project logo that just says Rush River Commons. That's it. Very simple, very understated. That was our intent.
Could I ask why you want to call it, why you want to have Rush River Commons as the brand instead of Little Washington?
Rush River Commons is going to be a larger project than Phase One. If the annexation goes through successfully, we will come back to you with a Phase Two for a project. And we'll have a larger campus, again, with other buildings that will be serving the community and facilities that will be serving the community. So I would argue it does have some sense of identity, but in scale with the signage size, it's very understated. And it is our brand. And in developing the name for the project, Rush River Commons, the biggest word on the project is commons because that is, you know, the vision that the team have for this is a community, it's a common space, it's for everybody, people in the town and the county. So that's what drove that thinking on the design.
I think, I would just say, cost my mind back, this is new information. I knew you used the word campus. It's a word that we often use about the in, the in's campus. But the in's campus is a series of separate buildings, each one of which says the name of the building, the past name, Claywell House. The inner of Little Washington, although there is a logo, but it's not identified as the development embracing all those buildings. And so I think this is very different. And I must, others may have different views, but I think this branding of the whole area, Rush River Commons, I mean, when we talked about the boundary adjustment, what we thought we were doing is branding it all Little Washington, bringing it into Little Washington, not creating some separate identity, Rush River Commons. So that's my personal view. And like the others, I think we would like to study it more so. Our motion, our recommendation from the planning commission is going to be a motion to table.
Nothing that I haven't said. I think that to Fred's clarification about total square footage per building is a compelling argument to me. I think that Caroline's point about, about being part of the fabric of the town is a concern for me.
Well, we're happy if you want to have a work session. I'm happy to come to a work session with planning commission at your request and go through each sign and the location. Happy to work with you.
We meet on the third week of March, fourth one day of March.
Did you make that motion? Do you need a second?
Well, I need, let's finish the session and then we'll close both of the sessions. Members of council? Jeanne, did you have any other questions?
Well, I guess I have some of the concerns that have already been raised, particularly for me, the project identification sign, which seems big, very tall, is going to kind of loom over the town, the sign that says Town of the Washington, of Little Washington. Now, the welcome sign is going to be dwarfed by the sign for Rush River Commons. And that seems to me to be misplaced priorities, that I'd like to see somehow it scaled back so things become incorporated, people will sit up. I don't have any trouble actually with the food pantry. And I think having separate signs, you know, explains the whole square footage that I might not have really realized until you explain that.
Again, if I might respond, one of the things that also made me helpful, you know, when we come to the planning commission is we have a separate landscape plan for the property along Warren Avenue. That's in the VDOT right-of-way, which you don't have jurisdiction over. But we work with town staff. We develop a landscaping plan for the front of the property along Warren Avenue. And the sign kind of sits in that area, and there's trees and landscaping around it. So it's not like you're going to drive down Warren Avenue and it's like, the only thing you're gonna see is the sign. So there's some context there that will definitely soften it. My only other suggestion, and I think for everybody, is walk by the sign where the ball runs. That's the scale of it. And the reason that we proposed to make it that size is that it's an auto-oriented sign. It's not, it's not something that if we dropped it down to the ground level, it's going to get lost in landscaping. And again, our thought process was instead of having a sign that had multiple potential users or putting a sign on the Warren Avenue side of the office building, we wanted it to be more understated. So our idea was, well, we'll do one sign here that just says it's Rush River Commons. And then people are like, oh, okay, I can go in here, then I'll see the different uses.
Well, I certainly didn't think you would want to create a ground up, but eighty-four inches is quite a bit above the ground floor.
And perhaps...
And I didn't realize, you know, I hadn't remembered about landscaping, which we make difference.
Now, again, it's certainly not our intention to have something that's going to be jarring or out of context. We're, I'm hoping that in all the time we've spent together, we're very sensitive about that, and we're certainly willing to work with you all on that. So if there's something we're uncomfortable with, let's talk about it and come up with a best solution.
I have some, I have to speak about some politics. You know, I mean, it's the competition for creating a look of Little Washington is the big plastic box sign with the firehouse on the right and the post office, which is not great looking on the left. And we are far more along the lines of the village of Little Washington in our design and everything about it. And to say otherwise is disingenuous in my mind.
I have my own, I have my own party with the fire hall sign that's in the county, unfortunately.
The second thing, as you know, we didn't realize that we would also be getting into a debate about branding because I didn't think that was part of the purview here. And thirdly, is relating to the town, both Fred and others have asked if we would allow a walking path to come down through the, to actually, to create a bond with the town because there's no other way of getting there now except to walk down the middle of Warren Avenue. And we've designed pathways that go through the now eased wetlands that are there that'll have a big walking contour with the town. That's all.
I'd leave the Rush River as a good partner in the combo and the other. To design an area that fits well within the town. Appreciate it all, but these little things will work for Fred.
Well, I can go along with Caroline, you know, the idea that the Rush River development is an extension of the town. It continues to enhance the town and growth. We're only talking about two buildings right now. And I don't know that it needs to have a sign identifying it, you know? If you can't find the food pantry, where's the food pantry? It's across the street from the post office. It's pretty simple. Where's the office building? It's across the street from the post office. Post office is a landmark now. Everybody knows where it is because of what its function is. So I think if we start putting a sign up that says Rush River, across the street is the Town of Washington, now we get into this battle of signage and we want to minimize that. I think once you enter the property, you're gonna know where everything is. You'll see a sign on the building that says your office building. You'll see a sign, which I like the food pantry sign. I think that's pretty attractive. You can see hours, it's the information maybe. Anyone pulls into that parking lot, they're gonna know that's the building I'm going to. You know? And this is just phase one. When it comes to the residential, yes, there definitely needs to be that signage for safety, for, you know, efficiency and someone coming to visit, fire, and all of that. But I, we can all recognize, we can all accept that this is the Rush River development, this is Rush River Commons, but I don't think it needs to be overplayed with its own, you know, signs on the road, you know, or anything like that. I'd be, you know, happy to see that one sign at the edge by Warren Avenue go away because I think the rest of the signage is going to be pretty much subdued, being that it'd be on buildings. So, I mean, that's my general appeal. Again, we want to make the development inclusive into the town.
Steve, you want to take his question to an answer both or do you want to answer them separately? Sorry.
If it pleased the council and the planning commission, we're happy to delete the project ID assignment. That, if you're satisfied with the rest of the signage, I mean, no harm, no foul to us. It was an idea and a concept, but we heard it. So if that's the will of the council and the planning commission, we're happy to delete that tonight.
Well, I can throw it back to the ARB needs to go through.
Like, they absolutely will, this is just a preliminary.
Right, right. But that's, you know, that's my general thought because, again, I like the inclusiveness. You know, this is a big undertaking, it's, you know, I remember when Brown was first broken, I was talking to Richard Burke. You and I were talking one day about the size of the project, and you'd said, this is the biggest thing in this county since, what, the school? You know, this is a big undertaking in this county. And we all wanted to make it, you know, yeah, warm and fighting, you know, success is bright. So, you know, that's just my general feeling. That one sign, I have a problem with, but other things, you know, and the other part is with some of the sign, I don't know, do you have hand carved signs, wooden carved signs? Most of it's just painted signs.
Maybe have a little street, little street signs.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody else is melted, no longer painted.
I am of two minds. The first part is that I see the importance of the branding of Rush River. Rush River was started as a vision. And it was a vision of one person, and he brought in a team of people. And so Rush River is more than just being something that is lost within the greater scope of Washington. Vision, as I understand it, of Rush River is not only to have something that makes it accessible, but it's also something to be environmental, is something to be sustainable. So on the one hand, I see the importance of branding because it's a way of recognizing that vision. On the other side, I think that, Steve, you said something that earlier, if you were asking somebody where social services... asking somebody who are social services, I'd rather they say that it's on Lake Atlanta rather than it's Rush River. And I'm wondering if there's a way that you might be able to get some kind of connection between, and that's certainly not our job here to tell you what that is, between that branding that recognizes that vision, which I think you have in some of your signage already, but also a way to make it part of the Town of Washington. One of the things that this feeble mind thought of is, if you use the same green, instead of having that blue, if you use the same green as the Town of Washington sign. Again, that's a poor suggestion from a feeble mind, but it's, it's one thought. But overall, as I said, I have two minds on this.
So the Town of Washington has an official green?
It does not have an official green, it doesn't have any official color, it doesn't have an official bird, doesn't have an official-
Well, you got a flag.
We got a flag.
Mine blew away, let us know.
And as I said, Chuck, I am, I am not imposing that, I am not, I'm just offering that as, as a way of trying to figure out some way to bring the individuality with the collective together.
Well, you know, we've worked very hard for, what, three and a half years, four years, to get to this point, and, uh, and it's disappointing to me to hear the discussion. I mean, it's, it's interesting, I respect it, but disappointing to me generally, and I would hope that you all could see that what we're doing is in the best interest of the town. It's always been that, it's been for the entire community, Ravenna County, and, and we'd like to work with you and move forward quickly, but, but I would also say, that's not happening to stand in the way of getting through this night.
I agree.
And, and if I could just respond to that, I totally believe in the spirit of partnership that we spent a lot of time investing in. This is not a, this is in no way a critique of that partnership. Indeed, it's a, it's a plea that we cement that greater partnership going forward into one vision of, of Little Washington, rather than slicing and dicing with names, a separate, kind of separate community. So I'm, I'm totally of the view, Chuck, that we can work through this.
Throw out one more thought?
Sure, and then, can I have an action back to you?
As Steve mentioned, you know, there's a phase two coming, hopefully, we're, we're all going to study what will happen. And maybe as phase two happens, in terms of how that integrates to the existing property and access to Warren Avenue, maybe there's a way in that, that sort of Rush River pops up, and we recognize that this whole thing is Rush River. These first buildings in phase one, they're just part of the Town of Washington. But the second phase, I mean, at this point, we have no idea what is going to be there, but maybe that's where the Rush River vision really comes out, the environment, sustainability, all these great things, which is what this first phase is doing as well, but then there's a chance for that identity to, to then be presented. So it's not, you know, it doesn't get totally wiped away, but maybe it just comes in the second phase where signage or recognition of all of this is noted. So just a few of the thoughts.
Madam Chairwoman, I think the action is back with you unless there are any other statements or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ch, Mr. Mayor. So I am going to make a motion for the planning commission to table the discussion and to reconvene on, uh, on our date of March, the fourth Monday of March, to further discuss this SUP with the cooperation and presence of the Rush River Commons team.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of March. Do I have this? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, is that again? Twenty-fifth?
Jean, tell us, I ended up sorry.
Okay, Madam Chairwoman, the planning commission is welcome to excuse itself.
Thank you very much. So I can now, the, the planning commission, after the public hearing, now adjourned.
May I ask a question for Martin? So if, if we proceed-
I'm going to deal with that in just a second.
Simple, okay.
Thank you all. All knowing, Martin. Martin, at this point, what are the, what's the council's options?
Yeah, I'm here. The council is going to have a special meeting. Together with the planning commission, we're going to be helping to consider that, and Martin, to continue to see our progress.
Am I required to wait for a recommendation from the planning commission?
Yes.
All right. And Martin's response was that I can't act without a recommendation from the planning commission. That, that being said, I would ask for a, I'm going to make a motion that the council encourage the planning commission at its next meeting to approve this proposal with the deletion of project identification sign, and allow them to move forward with a forty-three point two-two, if my math is right, and I'm a liberal arts major, so it's eighteen points two, my math, with forty-three point two-two square feet of signage. I would encourage my, the members of the planning commission to, to follow or to come along with the council on that suggestion, which seems to be the consensus of the group that met tonight. Would I have a second for that, that action? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Oh, you, no. Sorry, I meant, apologize.
Brad, I'm actually in favor, so, but partly because I thought Brad made a very good point, that we can look at signage again when we get through along with phase two. And that right now, we don't really need a sign saying Rush River Commons when there are only two buildings, and people can find that out. And my hesitation always to project identification sign, if that's off the table, I am going to work on this, I'm going to find a better, smarter site.
I, um, Jean, I apologize. I might just go ahead and modify my motion, and, and also suggest that the council agree to meet jointly with the planning commission at their next meeting to consider this, this, that we hold a special meeting on the same date as the planning commission's next meeting, so that we can consider this in complete, complete actions.
So we, Martin, is it? I like that.
Is that doable?
I will second that.
Any discussion?
Yes. So the discussion I would have is, while being in your company is a great joy, I don't want to come if the planning commission is not going to be able to come to a decision at that length.
Madam Chairwoman, do you think you'll be in a position at your next meeting to make a decision?
With all due respect-
Not, not to prepose-
The planning commission has never had a problem coming to a conclusion. If it has the paperwork, and we would certainly have come to one tonight if we had a bit more advanced one. So yes, I'm sure we could come to it, we could, on a tight date.
And I did not mean to do any kind of slight against the august body of the planning commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so I will modify my motion to say that, that, one, we encourage the, the planning commission to consider the, the proposal from Rush River Commons, taking into consideration the, the, consider approving it as proposed with the deletion of the identification sign, and further that the town council will meet concurrently with the planning commission at their next meeting, the fourth Monday of March.
And as the secondary, I approve of the amendments, and so second the amended motion.
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye. Aye. Motion is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, could you confirm with, I don't believe you need enough, but just confirm that the second public hearing will result in an ordinance change, does not need to have a second public hearing, if this tonight is active, because of the requirement?
Martin, is that true? That, that we would not necessarily need to have another public hearing to approve this?
That's right, you don't have to, that, that, that properly, you can't be closed properly, so we don't break up here, but it's not, you can comment on the public hearing, if you're concerned it's not required.
Well, we, we can modify the title of the meeting, but we will still continue.
It sounds as though the same application is tonight, me, right? Yes, you should have.
Well, just go, yeah. So we'll, we'll continue to have a joint meeting, just to prove that, I still leave my, my public hearing, assuming that is okay with those people.
Yes.
All right, thank you for that, my board. Thank you, Martin. All right, with that, we'll turn to the regular agenda for tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, we're trying to notice when this package was delivered to the town. It was delivered in January.
I will, I will ensure the record is clear on that, Mr. Opry, that the package hasn't been delivered to the town, it was not delivered to the, the planning commission in an adequate time for tonight's meeting, and I apologize to the applicant for that fact on behalf of the town. Uh, for the, so turning back to the regular agenda, uh, I would, uh, one, I just moved for approval of the agenda.
Sorry.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll move to approve the agenda.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
All right.
All right. Next up, can he, uh, can I get a, a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting?
No, no, no.
Oh, they're not done? Oh, thank you.
We're going to, we're going to just table that.
I think, I think, but, for a motion, really should have been approved, amended the agenda, just for a minute, because that's what you did when you started the meeting, you asked, and what kind of objections you were made, and you didn't. So you moved the-
Yeah, fair, it's fair enough. Try to, please, phrase.
This will be my last meeting, as a resident, so, you want to, but for the sake of the minutes, do you-
I want that right now.
Since it was a public hearing, I think it would be best to have a minute shortly before-
Then I am moving that we approve the amended.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Agent, for keeping us honest. Uh, for the mayor's report, I don't have anything to add tonight. Uh, work planning continues, planning continues for our next round of work on the water system. Uh, we expect, hope we keep that up in the next month or so. We will be making some additional repairs at the pump house, just to get a, just either preventive repairs to get ahead of some piping issues there. We're going to go ahead and deal with redoing a number of pipes in there. Members of the planning commission? If you could just, just keep it down a little bit. All right. Uh, so we're preparing for that. I would also just like, I know most, many folks that were here attended the funeral and knew John Anderson, but I did want to take just a moment to recognize the passing of Mr. Anderson, who's been a big supporter of the town over the years, as well as the broad, broad community, so, I think that's, that's it for that, for my report. Gail is unfortunately not, not able to be with us tonight. She did not have a particular update for the, for the treacherous report. Barbara, did you have anything for the treacherous report?
I have, can I ask a question?
And that is about the counter for discussion with the budget or anything like that?
Barbara, do you have a tenant to- We did, we exchanged emails about this earlier this week, and I-
We did, we exchanged emails, hold on. Sorry, I don't have it, I'll have to do one second.
It's okay, I didn't-
Okay. She, let's see, she would like to combine the budget review with the town council meeting, the April town council meeting, so you would start, like, at six o'clock, for example, to do the budget work session, and then at seven o'clock, you would start your town council meeting.
Do you think we'd be able to finish it in an hour?
That's the preliminary discussion, where it's just, here's the things we're thinking about going this year that are different from last year.
Oh, this is not the Saturday?
It's not, it's not this long work session that's coming.
Then in May, we would have the public hearing, and then in June, we would vote.
And the work session is?
When would the work session be?
The work session, she's proposing it to be right before the April meeting. So that would be the work session where, here's our draft-
I'll get back to the council with a-
I would propose that we do five o'clock.
Or, or, or even do a Saturday work session, but we'll, we'll, I'll come back, I'll come back to the council with a, a recommendation after this meeting, that's okay.
Yep. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's, that was the, that was the time to ask the question. Mr. Krim, do you have anything for us?
Well, Madam Mayor, the council chair, in the first day, you received an email from the council, Commissioner local government, and official of the government attending the March 42nd at ten AM in the Leesburg Town Hall, but the town in Washington County, Ravenna, on the first item on the agenda, the official of the government that provided the draft schedule, the hearing date, that would take place for your voluntary settlement due to, both those days, all Monday, twenty, there'd be three o'clock, nine, set for four presentations, by the county county and courthouse, and at seven PM, send a public hearing in the same location. So that's May twentieth, Monday, at three for four presentations, and seven for public hearing. And so that gen, that schedule is to be considered by the commission as March 42nd meeting, which we're invited to come to, uh, virtually, because it's a very limited space that they're operating in. Uh, so that's what I would appreciate your attention, uh, I would plan to attend that virtually, and, uh, if, if there's no objection to choose that calendar, then pull up, then we're good. So I would ask, if something does have an objection, we can discuss it now.
And, and for those who may not have been able to hear, Martin was just reviewing the planned hearing schedule for the, uh, Commission on Local Government, and you would consider the, and the, going into agreement on the, what would potentially become phase two of Rush River. Uh, the dates that he mentioned were, were May twentieth, a three o'clock presentation and a seven o'clock public hearing. Those dates are in keeping with the dates we've been discussing with the, with the Commission on Local Government for some time, so, as I just said, the meeting, the, both the presentations and the public hearing for accessibility reasons will be held at that county courthouse. And the, we were previously, they were planning to hold a meeting in town the following day, but that's been moved to Culpeper, just for the ease of travel of the commissioners, but we won't, won't necessarily need to be in attendance for that.
It's a little weird to go here from Culpeper.
Yeah, would have been my first choice. I recommended some reasonably good ends in town where they could stay, but I guess they decided to decline. Uh, okay, thank you, Mr. Guyerson. That, that Mr. Krim, sorry, I was looking at the next one. Mr. Guyerson, anything to add?
The reports in, in your package, quite honestly, I've been juggling a couple of relevant items that are in that report, the post office, packing shed, log cabin, as well as a few things with Rush River. They're all, they've all landed at the top of my list at the same time. I can tell the town council, I have met with the representative for, for packing shed, and had a nice tour, both outside and in. The representative said they would hire somebody to begin cleaning up outside, and I think we'll all know when that starts, it doesn't need a lot of attention. Other than that, I think you've got everything else.
And you'll be reporting that to the ARBD? And you'll be reporting that to the ARB next month, and then we may have some, some actual action at that point, yeah?
Part of my role within is to prepare a list for action by the ARB deficiencies. I'll start with the outside, the inside is too numerous.
Fair enough. I will, by way of a basic, I understand that the current owner is actively marketing the building for sale, which is, though the conditions that Mr. Guyerson identified will hold are transfer, convey. Exactly. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Madam Chairwoman, any other comments from the planning commission?
The planning commission met at our February meeting, and we continued our discussion on the zoning map and the zoning ordinance. And in terms of looking, taking a overarching look for what might need to be done to rationalize that, that's an ongoing discussion. Beyond that, we finalized our recommendations that we sent to you on the short-term lodging and that we're going to discuss later.
Great, thank you. We don't have it up in the ARB tonight. Did they have any actions this, this month?
Steve?
I think in your package, there were a number of C O As issued, one for Gay Street Inn, one for Rush River residential units, the guardrails on the second story slightly changed in design, and it had a fence, a wall, and a gate approved for, new and approved herb garden. So, they threw the nation once.
All positive. Thank you, sir.
The application for the housing on Gay Street was tabled, again, with Gay.
Right.
Was tabled.
And remains tabled.
Yeah, and was asked to be tabled until probably the next meeting.
This is for consideration of building a garage next to the house, for those who, for just general ones. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Turning to the modified agenda, we are on Section B, restrictions on short-term lodging and room capacity. The room capacity specifically for the M B's of the short term. We did have three motions that were passed to us by the planning commission. They are in your packet on the front page of this paper.
On the floor.
Offside. For us to discuss or take action on, first being a general recommendation from the planning commission to the town council to consider the townwide policy to adopt, be adopted to encourage business and economic development, but not at the expense of existing residential housing stock. For example, conversion of an existing residential mall to a non-residential use. I would say from my personal perspective, I think that's something that I've said repeatedly from this, from this seat, that, you know, I think we want to be as pro-business as possible as a town. And I certainly agree with that, but I am also very conscious of our shortage of housing stock in the town. So I appreciate the planning commission's recommendation there. We don't need to take a necessary motion on that, but I would certainly leave it open if the council feels like they, if they would like to reaffirm that in some sort of resolution. And also, if you feel comfortable with it, then discuss them in real large, if you guys want to, however you'd like to handle it.
Are we to make a decision tonight?
We don't have to take any action at all on any of them.
I'm not going to take action, I'm just wondering whether we can.
We can, yes. Take action on.
Do you want to approve each motion separately?
That's what I was saying, just march through it. See if, you know, it seemed like easiest thing to do, that we don't get muddled on that conversation. Would someone like to oppose such a motion as the first amendment?
I will make a motion.
Simply a resolution statement?
Is it a resolution?
Okay.
Is it worthwhile to make a motion for all four? Do we want to do separate motions for each one?
I think the separate ones will make, make a little.
Then I'll move, as we, we resolve, they make a resolution that incorporates the recommendation from the planning commission, your draft motion number one.
I'll second. None of it wants any discussion?
No.
All in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
On number two?
I make a motion to resolve, to accept the recommendation made by the planning commission.
I'll second it.
I'm going to suggest, by way of discussion, that we somewhat combine the consideration of those two, those two issues, since they're interrelated.
Those two issues?
Number two and number three. I don't disagree with the two, it's just it is directly related to number three, but we can, we can handle it as a standard.
I understand, but our leader told us that we were going to these individual.
Yeah, so, yeah, all right. All right, so the, any, any discussion on number two?
Frank, can you repeat your motion, please?
I move that we resolve as a council to accept the recommendation from the planning commission that's incorporated in draft motion number two.
All right. All in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Number three?
Yeah. I move that the town council resolve to accept the recommendation from the planning commission that's incorporated in draft motion number three.
Second?
Second.
I will lead off on discussion, and these two are somewhat interrelated. What I would like to do is, along with this packet, there's a spreadsheet in the back telling us the current layout of rooms in the, in the town. And point out that what, what has evolved in the town is two classes of the M Bs. We have, it's a spreadsheet. What has evolved in the town is, we have essentially two types of B and Bs that are operating. We have professionally managed B and Bs, and we have traditional, pardon, professional mom and pop B and Bs operating in town. If you look at the spreadsheet, particularly on the section, we'll skip over the end, but if you look down the list, B and Bs with sub, you have Foster Harris operating five rooms, you have Gay Street Inn operating in five rooms, you have Middleton Inn operating in five rooms, and you have the White Moose Inn already operating at eight rooms.
In multiple structures.
In multiple structures. My suggestion would be that, and as we've discussed at previous meetings, the Virginia Code recognizes the B and B as any place providing short-term lodging for nine or fewer, nine or fewer, well, I'm sorry, eighteen or fewer guests per night. My suggestion would be that we should recognize in the ordinance that we do in fact have two classes of B and Bs operating in the town. I would suggest that the Class One being the traditional B and Bs that we are operating in the town, and Class Two being those of professionally managed that exceed the standard of five rooms per B and B that's been identified in previous subs. The simple fact of the matter is, through no particular planning, but just because of the way things have evolved over time, we already have a B and B that falls outside of the current ordinance, and I think we need to recognize the de facto situation and make it a du jour situation, and make sure that it's appropriately accounted for in the town's ordinances.
The only objection I have is that when they were given a special use permit, if I recall correctly, for that, when they were, they were required to have an onsite manager.
Correct.
So I presume that's what is meant by professionally managed, and I don't know if they still have an onsite manager.
I can't speak to that. I presume that they're operating within the sub with which they were, they were granted. We don't do, I don't make Steve come into town to do a head check, and I have to make sure that the professional managers are on field, but we presume that they are operating as the, under the.
They need to have a professional manager.
Yes. And I would say certainly that any, if we forward this, that anybody who's in that, you know, in that second category faces the same requirements that we do in the ordinance to say that they're required to have a professional manager who is onsite when they have guests.
What does that mean, professional manager? Can it be the owner?
No.
Okay, so like Milton Inn does not have a professional?
Right, and they would be Class One. So Class One is traditional, mom and pop, five.
So they've moved up in the?
Yeah. Right, yeah, so we would split this list essentially, well, essentially, White Moose would be its, would be, would fall in a separate class, and potentially others if they expanded under a sub to accommodate more rooms. So certainly in case of White Moose, it would be the case. We know, you know, we know that the ball is in motion around, or the property is in motion as opposed, a more appropriate way to put it, around Foster Harris, and this certainly would come into play there. Or, but with others as well, if they decide to expand, just one second.
I guess the question is, they have to submit a SUP anyway.
Right.
Rather than create two classes and lead to some confusion, is there, can't we just grant, if, if, say, Foster Harris wants to add more rooms, can't we just make that part of what we do as, as part of the SUP?
The ordinance says it, it's written on Article Five, so, even with an SUP.
You can't go above that.
You can't go above that, period.
Okay. That makes sense, if you have two classes.
If you choose to cross that five-bedroom threshold, then I think, you know, you are something bigger than a mom and pop B and B, and you need to, you know, have an onsite manager to do along with that. But we need to recognize that fact. I think in some ways, it actually helps address the previous motion put forward by the planning commission, which was about making sure that, you know, we sort of preserve, you know, where B and Bs were in town was carefully thought out, actually both previous ones. So what we're essentially saying is, if you operate a B and B in town, then that's great, and you want to add a few extra rooms, we would consider that. But it concentrates on those structures that are already operating as, as B and Bs, rather than sort of walking down the road, people wanting to buy another house in town that converted to expand their B and B. That's one potential. I'm sorry, the chairwoman.
It was just a clarification, that when, and maybe this is what Steve was going to say, when we talked about that, the two categories, the second category is essentially one that can expand within its own building footprint. If you think of Foster Harris House, it already has the rooms. It's not going to buy a residential property next door and expand into them, which is what we were trying to discourage.
Not, not, well, Nancy volunteers herself. I see that.
And, and so, the point was, it's defective, it's almost already a small N, because it has the rooms, it can be converted to the second class, as opposed to someone coming and saying, I now want to build five more rooms.
Right. Which is slightly different. I don't see you.
And then Caroline, somewhat of the really guiding principle for all of these, whether it be Class A or Class B, or one or two, is that a special use permit is required for each. Every property has its nuances, some have more space for parking than others, some have neighbors that live closer than others. So if somebody had a five unit, I'll say Class One B and B, whatever the terminology is, and wanted to change it, they would come through a special use permit to make sure that all those nuances were vetted during the public hearing process. I think that's really the crux of creating, plus it allows existing B and Bs to move up within their own footprint, as Karen mentioned.
What divisions do we have for Class Two that fails to have a manager? Maybe starts out, manages, and they fail to?
At least we can require a periodic, I mean, there's no reason we couldn't require a periodic, you know, check-in, as Steve or number?
It's a revocation of their SUP.
I mean, they're violating it, and we can revoke SUPs, but I'm just saying, we could, if you're concerned that they're not complying, certainly, I think, Martin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we certainly could impose some sort of way to have a periodic check-in so that we understand who that person is.
Yeah, but again, I think we have to have.
And Martin was shaking, he said yes.
Right. As long as we have recourse, for someone who fails, that, let's say they hire somebody, they leave, and then they, oh, we won't worry about, they won't know that we don't have any.
That's a good point.
So we need, we need, I don't like to create, you know, whole series of penalties and things like that, but there should be some, some action that the council can take if they fail to meet that obligation that's required in the meeting.
Martin?
Just a procedural question. Does notice that indicate how we're going to, the bill requires a zoning amendment? Do you want to have that separate from the process, then from the zoning amendments? Guyerson, what we're going for, and part of that?
No, well, we're going to take, my recommendation, you can go ahead and move on. All right, now, I know we've got a process that I have to go through, we'll get to that. I need to make sure we want to move forward first. This is intended, intended to make sure we're going.
We got to vote on that?
Yeah, no, no, you and I are of the same mind, it's always good.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion to?
Did you have anything else specifically?
Well, I was thinking of Brad said, and really retroactive, I'd like, would the White Moose need to check in and show that there still is a manager?
This is on the, whether or not, to make some, imposing some sort of regular requirement for their, for their manager to check in with us.
It would be a reasonable condition.
No, not retroactive, nothing, it's always hard.
But I'm saying, there's no reason we couldn't require that of an existing business in town.
Now, does they want to expand further and require a special use permit for further expansion, but if they're invested in what I'm proposing today?
No, I'm not denying them the right, I'm just adding the, like, we want it, you, your manager needs occasionally check in of town.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt.
Okay.
I'm sorry, do you want?
He said you can add, but you can't help.
Oh.
For existing?
I presume that the, I'm going to presume that, to date, as far as I know, the owner of the White Moose is very vested in our community, owns a number of these properties here, and is going to, would be more than willing to voluntarily comply when it changes to the ordinance. I'll state that, knowing the, you know, the property. I think we would all agree there's no reason to not think that.
But we don't want a policy based on presumption, we want something.
But, I mean, we can, we can pass a policy, we just cannot compel that particular place to comply with the policy.
But we could compel others.
Anybody going forward would, he was just saying retroactively, we can't apply the standard, we would, we would have to depend on voluntary participation by White Moose, that anybody else would be, just one second, anybody else would be, would fall in that category.
As the sound administrator, this is a condition of a special use permit. The first, probably, after warning managers come and go, there certainly lapses whenever somebody's not there, we all know, probably the best example is the enders, managers come and go. The best enforcement mechanism is to ask them to come in front of the town council to explain why they're not complying with the conditions of the special use permit. Usually that fixes it pretty quickly.
Yeah, and I would also just add, since we're on the sub a little bit, but just to note that, you know, none of this would change the requirement for them to go through a normal sub process, you know, this would just, this would. You know, this would just, this would, one, just bring into, frankly, recognize the situation we already have, and then ensure that if we go, if anybody chooses to go down this road going forward, that we have a way to manage that to the point that we all raised, you know, a way for us to check, to make sure that these facilities are being appropriately managed, which is not what historically considered, I think, is important. And so it would in fact sort of broaden our ability to ensure that the Inns in our town are growing in a way that we are, we're supportive of. Mr. Rachel?
The point of fact, as a member of the council that voted on that SUP, I can guarantee you that we spent an hour debating on whether or not he was entitled to have a resident manager who was not a resident in the Inn.
Right.
And the only reason it was granted was because Gary Schwartz's wife, who managed the Heritage House, did not have a room in the Inn building, but lived around the corner. The sticking point was that Mr. Abdou did not want the resident manager in the Schwartz residence because that was going to become another place, but he owned the Pullan House. And so there was actually in the record how many feet it was from Gary Schwartz's door to the front door of the Heritage House and from the Pullan door, and they were comparable. In fact, it could be argued, if you took the distance of the street out, that the Pullan House door was actually closer. So we had a lot of that. When it gets to public comment, I'll say a little bit more about this issue, but just, it would not be additional. It was absolutely the critical factor in whether or not that application was going to be approved. As we missed a critical point, which I'll address later, but just so that, I agree, you can't impose retroactively a new condition, but the record will clearly show that one of the conditions for them to get the SUP, and they wanted a bundle of things. They wanted the Ice House, they wanted the Schwartz. So there's a package of things, but the critical one that was debated was where the resident, the resident manager would live. So clearly, there was a resident manager who was going to live not further than the Pullan House.
Thank you, Mr. Rachel, for that reminder as an alumni of the council. I think you wanted to modify it.
I did. So I would move that the council resolve to accept the Planning Commission's draft motion number 3 with the additional sentences at the end where it says, "After the sentence, it reads such property application can then be evaluated on its," it should be ITS, no apostrophe, "own merits based on the application of a particular proposal. Thus, comma, there would be a second class of B and Bs with more than five but less than 10 rooms in its current footprint of the structure, period. Each such entity would acquire its own SUP and would need to be professionally managed, period. The second class of B and B would need to provide evidence that it is professionally managed."
And then I believe to Martin's point, we would then need to just add a little, like we're saying, that you would further move that the council and the Planning Commission move, begin to take such action as required to modify the town ordinance accordingly.
Yes, and I will, I add that, plus, as part of that modification of the current ordinance is to add to the definitions in the ordinance what professional management, professional management means.
There are about eight sections, paragraphs in the ordinance that utilize the word B and B, bed and breakfast, and each one of it is a special, and make sure...
All appropriate portions of the ordinance.
But at the back of the ordinance is a definition area, and professional management should be in that. Anyway, that's my, my motion.
At one point, there was something about the manager needs to be resident?
And that's in there.
What were you adding? But it's, it's in the language for, for this.
Yeah, because the definition of professional management means that you have a manager within the residence.
Martin? Well, I think that we can work that out. I think, as we consider the shift to, any change to the ordinance, so let's, let's just say that we, as part of the consideration, we're going to address, we're going to address what professional management means, and which I think is a fascinating question. Do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion adopted. Thank you. And we will follow up with the appropriate scheduling for hearings, et cetera, to make such a change.
And Mr. Mayor, not to be finished, I have a fourth motion.
Yeah, I'm clear. Mr. Vice Mayor, would you kindly...
The council resolve to approve the draft motion number 4 presented by the Planning Commission.
So I, I'll just, by way of, oh, do I have a second?
Do you want a second?
Well, we, we kind of act like, yes, I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion.
The one, I like this idea of period ownership, period five years. One thing that we encounter, this council has encountered several times, people coming to the council and saying that, "Oh, if I can't have this many rooms, or if I can't have that, I can't afford to do this." Financially, you can't make it work. Okay? In my opinion, that's the universe telling me that you shouldn't be doing this financially. And it's not the obligation of this council to, you know, allow exceptions based on the applicant's perceived or quoted hardship in order to purchase the property or do whatever. I think we need to make sure that that, that is never, it's not permitted as part of the process. Because I think we have a couple that have gotten through on that basis, you know. "I can't do this. I can't afford it." Well, then you shouldn't be doing it. It's not our obligation to go and manage your finances.
Thank you for that. That's a fair point. I would add, just as we're, we're thinking about this, Dick, promotion. One, that the county just passed a two-year moratorium, or the appropriate language, limitation on folks before they can apply for a sub for their, for a house to be short-term relevant. They have to own it for two years. I know, I was here tonight in the Planning Commission debating this. I have a very strong feeling that minimum of three and up to five years. I'm not sure, and Martin and I had a conversation about this earlier this week. I'm not sure of the legal basis the county chose to use, and we're going to find that out for adopting their ordinance. I know Martin has some concerns about our ability to enforce this given Virginia's strong property law rights rules, but there might be some language you can use that does not outright do it, but adds some other restrictions that would allow us to, to get at the same point, but without doing it as a, as a direct, I think, change in grid or land over. And I think we could modify, we can accommodate that.
Well, and the language, it seems to me, is way open to interpretation. When you say a period of three to five years is suggestive, what does that mean?
No, that, that was just the Planning Commission's suggestion to us.
Oh, okay.
Pick a, pick a, they said they're saying, pick a number.
You're suggesting that the town council, not the ordinance would suggest it.
So these are all resolutions that then go to the zoning administrator to write up in useful language.
In this particular case, certainly what would happen next is if we went down this road is that, you know, I would ask both Steve and Martin to work together to find some language that would be appropriate to give us, language appropriate that will allow us to enforce it and come back to council probably next month and start a discussion that will play out over the coming months to adopt that.
If I might, the three keys of planning, book copy, places, and portfolio, the county's already cast a resolution and adopted the two-year. I'd like to take a deep look at that and see.
I would, I would expect you and Martin to work with the county to figure out what, back to my basis question, so.
I think we have a lot of work to do to get us to the point of taking on this.
I know, and there's a modification of this, but I'm just...
So I just wanted to point out that at the, in the public session of our discussion, we started with a recommendation of two to five years. And we're making that recommendation to unassuming, because we thought that was more a political decision, the actual length by the Town Council. But there was a very strong feeling in the audience, amongst the public, that two years was too short. And so we amended it to three to five years. So I'm interested that the county has gone for two years.
I think they started out a larger number, two, if I remember correctly from their debate on the topic. Sharon, I'm going to get to the public. I don't know if anyone can recognize the, the chairwoman.
And then in the draft motion four, or any of the ones, or three, are we addressing absentee ownership? Absentee owners? Are any of this must-be owners be full-time residents or residents?
We're saying they have to be. Well, we're suggesting that the person who at least tend to own it, whether they're absentee after that. I mean, there's going to get, that's going to get into a question of limitation, legal limitations on us, but it's a fair question to ask.
Because if they're not living in the facility, in the property, does that then turn into a tourist home?
So we have, we have no regulation for tourist homes, so.
Well, that's, well, that's the same.
I mean, we have an Airbnb, we have a B and B, or a short-term rental ordinance which covers that, which is essentially the same thing as a tourist home, we just use different language. So I, I misspoke there a minute ago. So we do have a way to address that. I think you could come at it as, you know, it must be your, your permanent residence from a legal standpoint, and, you know, I think that's probably a fair thing to...
Yeah.
Gene, did you have anything? I'm going to open up to public comment in a minute, and I want to go ahead and do this. So what I would like to do, I think Fred has then asked that we just modify the motion a little bit to ask that the, our council and our, our zoning administrator come back to the, to the Town Council in our April meeting and with a proposal for how we could potentially limit the spread of short-term rentals in the town. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Anything to get out of it?
I want to try and get the third period of the Rangers game. It's very dangerous.
I'm driving my batting average way up in the session, so. I have a motion, I have a second. That modified motion, you, or you seconded it? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution is adopted. There not being anything else on the agenda, this plan, I will open it for the public forum. Sharon?
Yes, sir. I was, you said if, if people are owners and they, it's their residence where they live, would they have to get somebody professional to come in to manage their home? Which if they already had a bed and breakfast for years and years and years, so now to suddenly would have to have a professional come in to manage?
No, for the, for the short-term rentals, that's not required.
I'm talking about bed and breakfasts.
For bed and breakfast, that's, that's handled separately in the ordinance. If someone wants to operate a traditional bed and breakfast like Gay Street and, or as any other Inns in town, they, they can continue to operate as they are. It's if they go above a certain number of rooms, then we're going to ask them to consider it. If they are in residence, you know, that's a good point, to address in the ordinance, we, you know, if they're in residence and they want to have 10 rooms, more power to them. But if they're not going to be, they definitely have to have, we're basically mandating them to have professional management above certain sites. Does that make sense? Thank you, man. Mr. Rachel?
Yeah, I, I really have to do this, but I feel complicit in this conversation.
You are?
Yes, I am. Both these conversations tonight, both Rush River and this one, and seeing how this will be my last meeting as a resident.
You keep promising us that.
It's true. Come see the moving van, burn the champagne, we'll, we'll celebrate.
Where are you guys all from?
Pennsylvania, Westchester, grandkids. But... We've sort of done the SUP bit. This is a little different. The night that Mr. Abdou came to, we should have listened to Ray Gooch. He kept sort of screaming at us, and we were so concerned about where this manager would live that we missed the larger point. As far as I'm aware, it's the first time in the history of town that a non-owner managed a B and B. That was the critical slide, not where that person lived. But for the first time, the Schwartz's had gotten either wink and an hour action, formal action, I can't remember which. There were only five bedrooms in the Heritage House. They wanted to go to the max that the ordinance allowed. So because the little house from Pete Mutt was sort of ancillary, they lived there and nobody cared because they were clearly, it was like, it was attached. Mr. Abdou wanted that unit, and he wanted what was then called the Ice House, the building, the separate building. And because they weren't, there was only five bedrooms in that building, it was the Inn. The council thought, "Well, that's okay. Well, then these other two were ancillary. Okay, they can be managed by the same manager that's resident at the Inn." But that resident manager was going to live in the Pullan House. So after a whole lot of discussion, that was the SUP. Well, there's two problems with that. First of all, it went to seven units, and I think that we didn't pay much attention to, because they weren't, there was only five in that building. But the real problem was that the Abdous weren't living and managing the Inn. Nobody cares who makes the breakfast. Nobody cares who does the laundry. But the person that is the owner-manager is to be resident in the Inn and had been. All right, so that's point one. Things that you really want to be clear about. Once you get an offsite manager, that offsite manager can be in Bangalore.
Be what?
They can live in Bangalore. We live in an age where lots of things are managed by people who don't even live in the United States. That's one thing. So be very careful about connecting whoever's managing with a physical presence in...
In the town.
Yeah, in the town. Well, actually, I would say in the facility.
It's much to be discussed.
Second, if you had adopted an ordinance similar to what was proposed, Wendy and I could never have come into the Gay Street Inn. It was not written in business. It was sold as a business. We came, we bought as a business, we lived there, we ran it just like Kevin Jay had. A two to three-year waiting period would have came.
No, no, separate, separate issue.
It wasn't new.
No, it wasn't new.
No, no, but also these are two separate issues in the ordinance. Short-term rent, there, there's a section that is defined or toward...
So it wouldn't affect traditional B and Bs?
It's not affecting traditional B and Bs at all.
The question of limiting property rights, I, I do not think what the county does is legal, and I think it will get a lawsuit.
Our, our council tends to agree with you on some of the...
Well, I'm not happy for that. He's much more current in his actual license, so I'm glad to hear that. But there's reason to believe, I mean, I need to see you guys spend a lot of time and energy. There's reason to believe the next session of General Assembly, states from preempt local jurisdictions totally. So it might be who, I don't know, you have a staff person here, I don't know who else you might have, but this is not going to be a local issue. I'm virtually certain that this state is going to propagate code changes that will restrict what local jurisdictions can do. The emphasis is going to be on who gets the taxes, and the state would like to see this as broadly open as possible. So we have competing interests here. The town wants to control the quality and the character of what's going on in the town. The state's interested in helping out business opportunities for getting the state's share of the tax. The town should start paying more attention to getting its share of these taxes once that's all worked down.
So I would say that we are, we watch, watch the tax receipts very closely from all of our Inns and our Airbnb.
It may be that local houses that are particularly affected with a large number of guest houses and B and Bs and things may actually pull together and start getting lobbyists to try and make sure that they don't get squeezed out and all money goes to the state. But these are rapidly changing issues, and I long thought that for something like, that what might happen at the Foster Harris, something between the traditional B and B, which has a fairly clear and strict resident owner requirement, and something like a small hotel, and that's, I think, is sort of where you guys were going. I think that makes a lot of sense because they're not comparable. Once you get sort of professional management and you have 10 rooms, and you may start serving meals at what's really a restaurant, rather than trying to squeeze that, that was another mistake we made when John and Diane came and one and John's dream to be fulfilled, that he could serve dinners to the guests he had in his Inn. We thought that made sense. They spent $50,000 to put in the ambition, and then suddenly they realized a lot of their guests were eating at the big inn, and it didn't work, so they said, "Can we fill up the table if our guests aren't filling the table?" We said, "Yes," that was the second round. You know how we got here. So it was to improve. But keep the traditional five-bedroom B and B as close as you can get, and do something with that middle zone. They're not going to become three-star Michelin, but they are... They're not going to become three-star Michelin, but they aren't.
They aren't B's anymore.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and good luck. Be sure you get the word to him. Somebody's going to try and easel in. And this, Brad's point is just really what worries me. If you look nationally, what's happening, there was just a report in D.C. There's one company offshore that owns 285 guest houses in D.C. now. They're bigger than Wyndham in a way, you know? And there's no reason not to believe that people will have their eye, you got a three-star Michelin here. People are having their eye and someone's going to start lining up all the other rooms that B and doesn't have. And then they're going to have two corporate entities that own the town. So if you could look at that somehow, but that's where Martin's going to be critical because Virginia really says private property rights are sacred. And some of us used to think that we were on that side of the argument. But none of the destroyed communities. So anyway.
So I don't have to put any pressure on you, Martin?
Good luck with all of that.
Thank you.
I'll be interested in visiting and seeing how.
Email visit Westchester.
Yeah. Well, there's email.
This is why I've been listening carefully. This is a concern to me. I, I worry of where Foster, my neighbors are going. How, how that property is going to evolve.
That's a fair, fair question. Why do we want to grapple with this report? Go sideways under yet another sub that's not well applied and at work. So very much appreciated. Any other comments from the public? I will close the public forum, and I would be happy to entertain any motion to adjourn.
Move.
Do I say? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. We are adjourned.